It's a board member and committee member.
Mary.
I'm Mary Kane, senior local counsel. I'm usually that.
Liz Large, contracted general counsel.
Lizanne Powell, board manager. Great. We are gonna start with some conversation about the foundation, and I heard that we've got some public commenters who'd like to go first. So we'll go ahead and let that happen. So I don't see what Bradshaw, so Mrs. Powell, I assume you're running that portion of things for today?
I'm Megan Mervis.
So Andrew, you have two minutes to speak, and you'll hear Karen O'Leary. And that time is up.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Megan Mervis, M-E-R-M-I-S, and my pronouns are she/her. There's no doubt that everyone who speaks passionately about school funding cares about their kids. Those of us calling for reform are saying that we need to be acting on behalf of all the kids in the district, not just our own. Characterization of our advocacy as divisive is a misrepresentation of the work that the reform group has strived to do. Over the past two-plus years, we've talked to community members across the district. The letter we presented to the board, signed by almost 500 parents, caretakers, students, and teachers from 75 schools, demonstrates the appetite for reform. We shared data and analysis with the board that had it been used would have provided the exact answers to many of the questions and issues the board continually brings up. Meanwhile, the district did limited outreach to the communities impacted most by funding shortfalls, and then promptly moved on from feedback like that gathered at the McDaniel Roosevelt Roundtable. The board has heard mainly from us, our supporters, and the most ardent supporters of LSFS. Relying on the community to meet you where you are at a board or policy committee meeting, with little groundwork being laid explaining how the system currently works and who benefits, excluded most of the voices you had hoped to hear from. This was true of the most recent roundtable. Most disheartening is the fact that the most substantive conversations took place after the meeting had ended, where discussions continued with those of us who had the privilege to be able to stay. That's not how public decisions about public education should happen. Some families have threatened to leave the district if LSFS disappear. The district shouldn't respond to threats that jeopardize the very promise of public education. It also ignores those who can't opt out. So let's talk about who already has left the district. Over the past four-ish years, even though the district has lost more white students overall, they have lost proportionally more black students as a percentage of the population. What is PPS doing to ensure that these students stay in the district? Especially since the data shows that most of them do not attend schools that have foundations. In the end, it's the district's own values that should be driving this decision. Based on the data and community input, a district-wide foundation should be the goal. It's now up to the board and district to figure out how to implement that plan, ensuring an equitable outcome for all students. Thanks.
Thank you, very nice to meet you. Ms. Powell, is there a next public member?
Yes, Beth Cavanagh. Hello.
Hello.
My name's Beth Cavanagh, C-A-V-A-N-A-U-G-H, pronounced she/her. I have two requests today. First, at the community meeting a few weeks ago, where Director Hollins shared the proposal that's on today's agenda, participants were asked to define what they saw as the problem we were trying to solve. I ask that board members here today and and not, please respond to that question as well. Using PPS's racial equity and social justice lens, which should be at the center of all decision-making, what is the problem with the current policy that needs to be solved? You've had time to review responses from meeting participants, and I'm sure you've heard from many others, but we need to hear from you. Why do you think this policy needs to be reformed? Please start with the why before determining the what or the how, so that you consider how well the proposals address the root problem. The second thing I came to talk about today is another question that was raised and not answered in the community meeting. This is a request for an explanation of the district's equity-based differentiated staffing model that results in more resources distributed to schools based on need, and how that is or is not relevant to the foundation fundraising policy. There are plenty of elements of foundation reform discussion where reasonable people may disagree, but we all need to be operating from the same set of baseline facts. PPS and the board have a responsibility to share those answers publicly and correct misconceptions when they appear. So please let us know when we can expect an answer to these questions. One, why does PPS have a differentiated staffing model? Two, since all schools have struggling students, how is it decided whether a school will get specific staff to support struggling students? Why do some schools have these and others do not? Three, how are foundation funds relevant to the district's staffing model? Does PPS reduce funding based on a school community's ability to raise their own funds? Four, what other elements beyond the equity staffing contribute to a school's per-student dollar amount? Schools with fewer than 180 students have many of the same fixed costs as schools with close to 600. Are the per-student costs for small schools higher even before the equity formula is applied? Five, why is Lincoln's per-student funding higher than Franklin's or Grant's, even when you don't count the foundation dollars according to PPS's published budget book? I heard Director Konstam say that schools with foundations have the lowest per-student funding in the district, but Franklin and Grant don't have foundations, and Lincoln has fewer underserved students in either of these schools, especially Franklin. When comments come up, when questions about these, when misconceptions come up, there's a responsibility to address them in the moment, and we need to be all clear on what those answers are. Some of these things have been stated publicly, some of them have been published, but they don't ever come up in the moment, and there is not a clear place where everything, all the relevant information and the factual sort of baseline information we're operating from is put forward in relation to this policy. So please trust the community, operate with transparency, accountability, and vulnerability as these conversations proceed, and give us all that same foundation to work from. Thank you.
So at this time, we're gonna look at the responses and just kind of discuss the session that we had on the 12th. We're not voting on anything at this meeting. We're not taking anything forward to the board at this meeting. We're just sort of talking about what we heard in the community and sort of kind of where we go with next steps with this foundation policy work. So I turn it over to Director Hollins, because you've kind of taken a lead on this work, which is amazing. I love your passion for it, and you're wanting to find some solutions here and to kind of begin floating some ideas and just seeing, throwing the spaghetti and see what sticks to the wall.
That's a great way to tie it off. I love that. So I'll just kind of speak from my perspective of, you know, what I've been hearing and what I've heard over, you know, some time about a foundation piece. And, you know, I want to make sure that I'm clear on, you know, when folks talk about equity or when folks talk about, you know, well, why do one school get some of the other ones? And I guess for me, you know, a lot of this, like Ms. Beth Cavanagh said, you know, a lot of this stuff has already been explained. So bringing it all together every time we come to a meeting or a roundtable or something, for me, it just seems redundant, because a lot of us have already been at these meetings where some of these questions have already been answered. And another thing, we, something needs to happen, right? We can keep talking about it, we can keep having meetings.
But actually, I mean, if nothing happens, then we, the status quo is what stays, which I don't think any of us agree is, I think, like you said, there's all these people who want reform, I think.
Exactly.
Yes.
So I think, you know, at some point, we have to make a decision. And I think we, as long as we're making, for me, is making the decision which is the best interest of our kids. I think then that's kind of the direction we should be going in. And that was kind of what my proposal was based on. From listening to, you know, the folks who wanted to reform and folks who wanted to save the foundation piece, my idea came from, well, outside of the parents, what is best for our kids? What is best for our kids at schools that don't get foundations now? What's best for our kids at schools that get foundations? And so that's kind of where the proposal arrived from. You know, I understand systematic change and the need for systematic change. And I also understand that, you know, in order to get to systematic changes, there's small things that have to take place first, you know? And I look back on the civil rights movement, and, you know, and I know I reference that a lot, but, you know, the right provoked distance happened, you know, overnight. You know, there was a series of, you know, people dying, people getting hosed, people going through all these different series of steps to get to those rights, you know? And so when I look at the foundation piece, you know, I think there's been steps that has led up to us doing something that's gonna benefit our kids. And I think as long as we're keeping our kids focused, the proposals that, you know, that are coming up, I think it's all gears towards that, but how do we serve both and? And that's what my proposal tries to do, is to look at the both and. Because like I said, we have schools that's not getting anything right now. So if we don't do anything and the status quo stays the same, those kids are not gonna get anything after '24, '25, right, '23, '24, whatever that year is. And so it's kind of looking like, how do we get a ramp up to getting to the district-wide funding model that, you know, is good in theory, but it hasn't been practiced yet? And so while we're moving to that plane of district-wide fundraising, you know, I feel that this proposal is kind of that ramp up to that. And it gives time, you know, for the collaboration that, you know, we all talk about as far as the district-wide funding. It gives us time to see the involvement, the necessary things that's gonna need to take place. It gives us time to look at what's needed to provide for the fund for PPS to gear up to do the things that we want to do. And so that's kind of where that proposal came from. And I know we still need to vet it, especially through the levy committee. But like I said, I guess my thing is just, if we don't do anything, the only people who suffer is our kids. So that's kind of where I'm at with this.
Well, and I think, you know, there's some really interesting questions people have about equity versus equality, and that's a conversation. And this, you know, I think there's a pushback of if foundation schools raise over $100,000, that there is no then portion of that that goes to like a fund. And so those are some of the concerns I've heard. And I think, you know, from my work on foundations, part of the reason I participated in foundations was because of that parent fund. So I think I would really like to see that foundations that raise over $100,000, maybe that first hundred they get to keep, and then they lose that hundred equity grant, or whatever it is. But then anything above that hundred, they might then give a percentage to, you know? So I think those kinds of things need to be talked about. I do think we still have a fundamental question about having foundations. And I know that you've said that ultimately you want to move us to a, you know, one foundation for all of PPS, but over time is kind of where you're headed with that. So I think having clarity around that we're stepping towards that also is helpful. And again, we can say that, but, you know, when a new board comes in, they can then do what they want, but we can kind of express and work with the community to say that. I would say that, you know, the, reading through the sticky notes, somebody did say like, you know, let's run things at the wall and seeing what works. You know, I tried really hard for us this year to start from a place of using all the great work Director Brim Edwards had done of that listening session at McDaniel, the things we've heard from community, the, you know, we had multiple proposals also from folks who were for local school foundations of what could be better, taking all of that and then saying to folks like, let's take a step back and maybe have this conversation in a different way, which was the, you know, that fundamental question about what problem is it we're trying to solve? And I loved the insight somebody had at the work session, which was, we all, there's a lot of different problems we're trying to solve, and yet there's a lot of shared concerns. So I'm wondering if we start from a place of, what if we were to look at the foundation policy as, what are the concerns people have about their kids' educations? And how can we start there for, as we create this policy? The one thing that was disappointing is there were some, some folks chose to use the, what are you concerned about and what do you hope for, to write some things like, well, I hope other people see that I'm right, basically. I'm concerned that other people are wrong, which, fair, that's fair. But that was not the intent of the exercise. And but that's what people are concerned about and hope for, that, you know, we can't police that. But I did think, you know, that was interesting, and I'm really thankful, you know, I had tried to get folks from foundations and folks from reform together to have some conversations, because I think we have a lot of really creative, talented people who could really think through creative solutions. And I'm really glad that was able to happen at the end of the meeting. I know it wasn't public, but it was, again, idea generation and.
And just so I'm clear, my understanding is there were only three board members.
There were only three board members there, so it's not a, like, the rest of us left, and so it was three board members. And I know that a reporter from Oregon was therefore part of it as well. But, yeah.
So you're saying there was an after-meeting, after the public meeting?
No, it wasn't that there's an after-meeting. The people got together after the meeting and were just talking about different ideas.
So I wasn't part of it, so I don't know. But I, I was talking to, like, I think, you know, people came up and started talking to board members, and then eventually, like, you and Amy and Andrew were all standing near each other, and then that eventually became one conversation.
Yeah.
Michelle and I.
Just listening, yeah, we're just more just listening what people had to say. It was folks connecting, you know, and exchanging phone numbers, you know, which was awesome.
And not people with board members, but reform folks and LSFS folks exchanging numbers, and, yeah. So it was one of those organic things that make our legal team a little crazy, because we want to honor public meeting laws and be above board, and.
And we do.
And we do, and, yes, and I didn't even think about it.
It's just, it's just like problematic, because there's so many people who have been in the conversation for a long period of time, and we went through the whole process of actually trying to solicit input from those who don't normally have a seat at the table. And so it just, to have something that appears to be somewhat official, like in our district headquarters, where we're, not everybody's invited or even knows about it. I mean, I left the meeting after it was over, because officially, the meeting time was over.
And I don't think the, I mean, I think the conversation and the work you did, Julia, with like folks at McDaniel is vitally important to this continued conversation, right? That this, this was one, another piece of that conversation, but it doesn't do away with those pieces of what we've been talking about, right? But I do understand what you're saying about that, that to have a conversation after the meeting officially ended feels like it was exclusive of people.
Well, it doesn't feel like it, and it was, because first of all, board members didn't know what was happening. And, you know, whoever stayed, and I don't know who stayed, so maybe, maybe, maybe it was representative. But certainly, you know, from my perspective, I wouldn't view it as like part of the conversation, because it wasn't inclusive, and nor did we know about it, so.
No, no, we're not saying that was part of the conversation. We're just saying this was the outcome of the, after, what happened after the meeting. But it wasn't, we're not saying it was part of the conversation.
Well, Ailey just said it was. I mean, that's some, that's what I'm reacting to, is like, we have to be careful of, like, that we're not injecting things that came from something that wasn't a public meeting, that like somehow that that was, that's part of the official.
So that's problematic for me, because I have conversations with people all the time, one-on-one, that inform how I show up. So I think if we are standing around listening to members of the public talk to one another, then I think we can, I mean, I don't want to get into an argument with you about this right here, but I do think there are lots of ways that board members are informed to make decisions. And I think I wasn't there, so I don't know what got said, but I have heard from people that it was a helpful conversation to those that were part of it.
And I was there, so, you know, for what it's worth, I was there. So like I said, to me, it was just more informative of what the comments were said. But no, like I said, it wasn't part of the original conversation.
So at this point, I feel like, you know, we're in April. We're not gonna be able to do something now to pass a policy, to like vet it through the community, do all the steps we need to do, and pass a policy by the end of the year. I think that this idea of looking at the ESAR dollar grants we've been able to give to schools to help support their school improvement plans this year is really interesting. But I do think this, you know, needs to be refined. And I think you got a lot of really great feedback at the meeting, and I think there continues to be conversation about this. And I think that there are things to talk about with, if, you know, the idea of these sort of grants to schools is great, it's where does that money come from? And there's been talk about different funding sources, and we kind of need to figure that part out before we can really move forward on.
And that's what I was thinking, I was thinking maybe, and I don't, you never know the process it goes, but I was thinking that we, I don't know if we voted out of this committee, at least the idea of the proposal to the levy committee, you can't do that.
No, because, so we can only vote things out to the full board. So we can say, we are interested in this as a process, and we could, we could vote out a policy that decides, that says we're gonna do these grants. Then it's up to, really, the superintendent then to fund them. But then that becomes another issue, because we don't normally set policy that has a budgetary impact.
So can we, can we, I'm gonna say.
This is a question for you.
Pause it, I guess, and then send, you know, have the, tap the levy committee, look at the inner workings, like, what's gonna cost and all that stuff, and then maybe come back, can we do that?
And the levy committee, we also might want to wait to do anything until we know if the levy passes and what's gonna happen with the bill to lift the cap on the levy, and all of those other pieces.
That's what I was thinking.
And it may be that we keep this idea, but we don't fund it through the levy. We come up with a different solution.
Yeah, I would actually suggest that this committee do the work on, like, what, how is it structured? I mean, how it's paid for, it seems like a relatively, like, a separate discussion. And so like, you know, there's, there's all sorts of policy ramifications, because I think there were a lot of unanswered questions at the meeting the other day about, like, how it'd work. And so for me, for example, I know that the biggest determinant of student success is access to high-quality instruction. Sometimes that happens, the high-quality instruction happens because there's extra EA in the room. So the fact that, you know, I think that the biggest piece of this is like not whether we have foundations or not, but whether they can buy staff. And so to me, what this committee wrestle with is like, so, you know, you know, the fundamental questions, like, can foundations buy staff? If yes, like, how much, how many? If they can, how do we continue if we have committed as a school board that we're gonna have an equitable funding formula, which includes like FTE? How we maintain an equitable funding formula if some schools can add FTE? And this is then sort of like, if, for example, if we said you could raise up to, and this is just for illustrations purpose, you can raise up to enough money to pay up to FTE. Like, then does the district commit, decide that because we have an equity formula, and we were gonna build on it, but still have it be equitable? If this school over here gets to add two, then everybody else gets to add two, or some sort of per capita, like by prorated ratio? That's how we keep our, you know, equity formula. But that's what it seems like this committee should be discussing. And if it comes out to like, you know, it's like, you can raise, you know, this is, this is what the proposal looks like, then it's like, how do you pay for it? It is like a totally separate question, but I feel like it's way too early to get to, like, you can't, if you were gonna pay for it with a local option and increase taxes, the details need to be really clear. You can't go to the ballot with a, hey, just give us more money, we're gonna increase taxes, and then we're gonna figure it out later. So to me, it's like, there is a lot of work to be done on the base proposal, so that there's something baked that then you can fund. And that's actually a much larger piece of work than the actual, how do you fund it?
So I guess, I guess my question would be, you know, what happens until something gets done? Or do we just keep having these conversations and nothing gets done? Because right now, from my understanding, this has been going on for a couple of years now, and nothing has changed, and they already have the policy for.
That's, that's because for two years, this got blocked. And so, I mean, it's not, it's not that.
But it don't have to be blocked now, though, is what I'm saying, like, we can be moved in a direction.
We have a proposal from the superintendent, I think, is, gives us some breathing room for next year, and like, it's something to build on. So if, it seems like, though, again, we can't refer something out if there's not, if it's not a, you know, well-thought-out proposal. Like, you can't, you can't fund something, you could maybe in the superintendent's budget, because then you're not going to have the voters. But if you're gonna go out to the voters, it needs to be, you know, like, we have to have it completely baked. So that's not gonna happen until November, so it's not gonna be the following year. So anything that's done would, if we're not gonna do something substantive, it's gonna rely on the superintendent's, the proposal that's in the budget that the board is gonna consider for the next fiscal year, which there's 100,000 or so for each school.
Yeah, so what, I guess my question, what happens in, what happens in '24, '25?
Well, that, that's why this committee should start working on a more detailed proposal, exactly how it would work. Because then, once you have a detailed proposal, then you can figure out how to, how to pay for it. Again, there's like basically two, two ways to do it. One, out of existing resources, or two, potentially, a, you know, additional ask to voters. And especially if it's the latter, it needs to be well-thought-out, because it likely would be, you know, a tax increase. And, you know, that, that's a very different than passing a renewal of the levy. I mean, already, people have expressed, that most of the polling in the region shows that people feel taxed-burdened. So, so I think, I would spend the time right now on, you know, taking your proposal, Gary, and moving it through the process to answer questions that were asked about it. You know, look at it through the equity lens, what, how do we need to sort of refine it or change it or evolve it? And then, let's say, when we have more clarity on what it is and how much it costs, then the levy committee can figure something out, or the superintendent.
So I think what would be helpful, Julia, is maybe if you and Gary could get together and look at the proposal, and then maybe you could, because you do such great policy work, could maybe help bring forward some of those questions or thoughts, and especially given your history, long history on this, and your advocacy for those who maybe haven't had such a voice in the room, that might be a helpful piece.
I'm always happy to work with Director Hollins.
Okay, so maybe we'll have you two work on something and see where we are, and perhaps bring it back to the next meeting, or bring it back down the road. Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, so that, that gives us another step on the, on the path here. You guys want us at a timeline? Do you want to bring it back to the next meeting? Sorry, Julia, you're still muted.
Why don't we, why don't Gary and I have a conversation, we'll get back to you about whether, I mean, I just think there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. I don't think it's like we could come back the next meeting, but.
So maybe Mayor.
We could talk about that offline.
Okay.
And then we'll, and then we'll, we'll talk and then get back to you, Ailey, okay?
Let's just have a status report at the next meeting, and it could be that, you know, just to let us know where, where you are.
That works.
That's, that's okay. Okay, we're moving on to the complaint policy. We've got a red line version before us. Ms. Large, do you want to take us through this?
Yes, so we are on page three of 10, in section 1A to B. Mostly, just look for the red text. This is staff's attempt to put in words what was discussed, the issue raised by Director Brim Edwards at the last policy committee meeting. I actually would suggest one word change, and I wrote the word, and then I read it.
Yeah, sometimes you just let something sit, and you realize that it needs to improve. Yeah, so what's your word change, Ms. Large?
I think in the last, second-to-last line, but, well, starting with sub 2, B sub 2. "A summary of complaints that are not governed by a process that is required by statute or regulation," AG Title IX.
Okay, wait, I, I am not where you are.
Sorry. So the, there's only red text in one.
It's in red. Okay, that's where, I was like, I didn't see it there. I, B sub 2, I was confused.
Page three.
Okay, page three, I was there, and then I like couldn't find where you are. Oh, okay, B sub 2, I get it, B number 2, got it.
Right, so it says, "A summary of complaints that are not governed by a process that is required by statute or regulation," AG Title IX, and we will change that to Roman numerals to be consistent with how this is represented, "that have been filed using the district's complaint process concerning matters that may affect more than an..." I actually think "may" is a little more permissive than I understood the direction.
So it should just say.
I think that if, I would delete "may" to, again, try to match more what I heard, what I think I heard in the last meeting. Again, subject to the committee's discussion and amendment in any regard.
Director Brim Edwards, do you have, since this sort of came from a thought you had, do you have any response to this redlining?
Liz, could you read the sentence as it exists, post your thinking?
Yes. "A summary of complaints that are not governed by a process that is required by statute or regulation," AG Title IX, "that have been filed using the district's complaint process concerning matters that affect more than an individual student or school."
I think that captures it.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you have any comments, Director Hollins? Do you have any comments, Director Hollins? Is it Holland or Hollins?
Hollins.
See, I think it's Hollins, but in my phone, you're Holland, so then I get like self-doubt, okay?
No worries, on my birth certificate, Miss Holland.
Really? Your birth certificate's wrong? Wild. All right, we have, people in my family disagree how to say my last name, so, you know, everybody's got their own stuff. Okay, so do we need to, can we vote this out of committee at this point and take it to the full board? Okay, all in favor of sending this on to the full board, please indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
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 All opposed? All right, this passes to the full board for a first reading. All right, let's get an update on policies in the public comment period, Ms. Large.
I think the only one is the one that was first read for the second time.
Second, third?
No comments have been received.
No comments so far, okay, great. Okay, and we did our public comment at the top of the meeting. So I think that's everything.
The work here is done.
Awesome.
I think our work here is done, and this meeting can be called into adjournment. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
For this policy meeting on record.